Good morning. Welcome to the Senate on the fourth day. Senate will come to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call for Friday, October 29. Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin? Byman? Boner?
Yeah.
Bouchard? Case? Cooper? Driscoll? Ellis? French? Burfee? Gru? Hicks? Hutchings? James? Kinsky? Cole? Cost? Landon?
Here.
McCune? Nethercutt? Pappas excused. Perkins?
Here.
Raffus? Salazar? Jeweler? Scott? Steinmetz? Wasserberger? Baldwin?
Excused.
Excused. President Doc Stetter?
Here.
Twenty-eight present two excused.
Prayer by Reverend Gilbert, retired minister of the United Methodist Church.
Offering this prayer is sort of like being a senator. They invite you back until you get it right. May we pray. Whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is commendable, if there is any excellence, think about these things. Eternal God, present and powerful in every human mind, help all people to think about Paul's words of truth, honor, justice, and excellence, so all our thoughts and deeds may be commendable. We ask that your abundant wisdom be known within Wyoming Senate, House, Governor, and staff within this special session. May your will be done in ways that are harmonious and beneficial. Grant these your servants wisdom and words in the exercise of their office, that harmony and hope will prevail. Issues resolved amicably, and Wyoming stand as a guiding light for other states. We ask for travel safety and weekend renewal for all your servants. We pray humbly, honestly, and expectantly in Jesus' name. Amen.
Reading, correction, approval of journal. Will the reading clerk please read the journal committee report?
Mr. President, your journal committee report to the Journal of October 28th has been read and recommends that it be approved. Signed, Senator Cole, Chairman.
Are there any objections? There being none, the report is adopted. Bill's on third reading and final passage. There are amendments. Reading clerk, read in. Third reading of Senate File 1003.
Senate File 1003, COVID-19 Discriminatory Practices Prohibition, an act relating to miscellaneous offenses, sponsored by Senator Steinmetz.
There are amendments. Reading clerk, please read in amendment number one. Senate File 3001, or excuse me, Senate File 1003 on third reading. Senate will just, we'll come to a pause for just a moment. And there is a corrected copy coming forward on this one right now. Let's do this. Let's move on. If it doesn't affect the process, let me double check here. Okay. We'll wait till we get the correct. Senator Byman, would you approach the desk? Senate will stand at ease till the sound of the gamble. Senate will resume. Thank you for your patience. Bit of an explanation for those listening, those in the chamber. We had essentially had some overlapping amendments. We had to get that corrected. That is being done as we speak, so we can proceed now. Let's proceed now into the amendments. Reading clerk, there's an amendment. Reading clerk, read the amendment, please.
Senate File 1003, third reading amendment number one, page eight after line four.
Senator Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to withdraw 3001 from Senate File 1003.
Absent objection. Amendment number one, third reading amendment number one to Senate File 1003 has been withdrawn. There is amendment. Reading clerk, read in the amendment.
Senate File 1003, third reading amendment number two, page seven, line 15.
Senator Land, Senator Landon on the screen.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I would move third reading amendment number two to Senate File 1003 and ask for the body's consideration. Mr. President, first of all, I apologize for having to come to you via the screen this morning. I've got a doctor's appointment a little bit later to take a look at a couple of things, and so I appreciate the opportunity to remain engaged here. Mr. President, yesterday, we voted through on second reading a complete rewrite of this bill, and in my mind, it took away a little bit of the opportunity for us to have a good debate on what penalties this bill would impose on our small business out across the state. And so that's, that's why I bring you this third reading amendment, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. It is a little bit substantive, and we try to stay awake not on third reading, but I hope you will understand, given the circumstances. Just to run you quickly through the amendment. This, as it stands now, as we've moved this protected class of citizens proposed underneath the criminal statutes, what remains in effect is that someone in a small business could be imprisoned for six months and fined $750. Section C of the amendment says that notwithstanding that penalty, under section B, any person who intentionally violates this section on account of a person's COVID-19 vaccination status commits a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than $50 and subject to the following. Under subparagraph I, notwithstanding authority granted under 72102, that incident, chapter two is the peace officers chapter under Title VII of our criminal procedure, incidentally, and that is precondition for arrests. But a peace officer shall not arrest the person without a warrant for an alleged violation of this section. And finally, subparagraph two, no conviction under this subsection, whether by guilty plea adjudication of guilt or forfeiture of bond, shall be reported by the court to any law enforcement agency upon payment of the fine imposed of criminal conviction under this section shall be expunged by operation of law from all records of the court six months after the entry of conviction. For any person whose record of conviction is expunged under this section, the conviction is deemed not to have occurred, and the individual may reply accordingly upon any inquiry to the matter. No expungement under this subsection shall be considered for purposes of any other law providing for expungement, and we go into the definitions under subparagraph I and two I and three I under paragraph D. Mr. President, that's a quick rundown of what the amendment does. If, senators, if this language looks a little bit familiar, it probably should because it was the work of the legislature under the smoking statutes, as we moved that age to 21. And we used some of the language that we utilized under that particular statute. So it is for your consideration, Mr. President. It lessens the punitive damages of this bill and certainly gets it more in the direction of where I might be able to support it. I am, I remember very well a couple of days ago when the good senator from Sweetwater County said that the enemy is not our small businesses out there. It is the federal government mandate. And so that takes, this amendment takes that to heart. I would do my best to answer any questions. Hope you'll support the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion. Let's go back to Vice President Hicks.
Mr. President, I'd like to divide the amendment.
Everybody be prepared. Now you show us where.
All right. Division number one is line, page one. Line one through 27 includes page one, line 41 through the balance of the page and all of page two. Division two, Mr. President, is page one, line 28 through 40.
Okay, as we have it then, Vice, Mr. Vice President, we have division one, page one, one through 27, and then continuing on with page one, 41 onto page two, one through seven. Division two, page one, lines 28 through 40. Is that correct, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Rule divisible? Senator Raffus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't see how that is divisible because I do not see how division two could stand alone in the absence of division one. It would leave behind a Romanet II suspended somewhere. It also would not benefit from the changes that are above on lines one through seven, although it would be easy to remedy that by saying that portion would go with either. As stated, I would suggest that it's not divisible as described.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. President, I'm looking at the, what the minority floor leader said, and I'm trying to track that in. I do think it's divisible because we're dealing with just one subsection, a subsection C, so it leaves C intact. It leaves everything else intact except the Romanet II. And so the Romanet II, I believe, is divisible because it has a separate subsection under C, and consequently, the rest would still stand, and it would deal strictly with Romanet II, which is a subsection of C. So I do believe it's divisible, Mr. President.
Let's, before we go back to the minority floor leader, Senator Case, you've been at this for a while. Your thoughts?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On the divisibility, I think that two would only be able to be part of this if one passed, if one were to fail. And then Romanet II, which is the division number two, could not stand on its own. It would need additional language. Would have to be something, you know, it's tied to notwithstanding on lines 18 through 22. So I don't think it is divisible.
Senator Case, remain standing for a moment then, with the exception if one passes. Correct?
If, if one passes, it would be a
All right. Mr. Minority?
It'd be the same as a subsequent amendment to one in that sense. And so I guess if the chair could rule that we could vote on division one.
That's, that's where we're headed. We're going to vote on number one, but let's check in with the minority floor leader. He had the original concern.
Mr. President?
Oh, we'll vote. Move up the screen, somebody. Senator Perkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, looking at this and listening to the argument, this is on the question of divisibility, not on the, not on either function. You know, if we look at the divisibility, what I, what I believe that the vice president is talking about, I think if, 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 if division two were to pass on its own, essentially, division two, I think, would simply become C. There is a conviction, there is, there is a, there is a criminal penalty that's already, that's in the statute, is in the bill as it's provided now. We've got that language in, in B. I think division two simply becomes subsection C, and it just, so it just refers only to the conviction and the fine, and only to the conviction that might happen under B, which is the existing language. So assuming that, I'm assuming that that, that simply is just a scrivener issue that, that division, division two, which is basically Romanet II, lines 29 to, or 28 through 40, that just become, that'll, that'll simply become division, that'll simply become subsection C, and it's just going to unwrap any conviction that happens under the, under, under A and B of the, of the statute. That's, that's the way I think it would happen, and if that's the case, then I think it would stand on its own, and it would be, it would be divisible, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Minority floor leader, you had the original concerns?
Mr. President, I wasn't regrettably, I wasn't convinced that it stands alone. The, the rule for divisibility is that you have two separate questions, which independent from one another stand alone. As outlined, if all that is left of this bill is Romanet, or excuse me, this amendment is Romanet II. In other words, division one would fail, division two passes. It does not stand alone because there would be no C. It would simply be inserted into the position, well, honestly, there isn't even lines one through seven, so there's no place to put it either. That could potentially be restructured by redefining the question. We do that sometimes. So maybe there is an approach that's a solution here. And I'm happy to try and contemplate that, but I am still concerned, and, and, Mr. President, the the rule of division is not an if clause. You can't do an if one, then two. That's not how division works. You should be able to take each division in either order. And if you can't do that, that's a good test on whether it is divisible as described.
Come back to your opening line.
Yep.
I heard the word withdraw in there from you. Is that correct?
It's not my, I can't withdraw anything.
No, your, your original concerns, you're going to step back. We're going to go back to the vice president is, but you've alerted us to a scenario here that's of concern. But you've alerted us to a scenario here that's of concern.
I would challenge the rules committee before I would withdraw anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice.
I'm not gonna sit down.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. President, I, I understand the argument, and I think there's an argument to be made here. And so with that, Mr. President, I would ask for convening of the rules committee on the divisibility of this amendment.
Heard the request. Yes. Yes. Okay, we've had a request for convening the rules committees. Senate will stand at ease while we do that. Uh, rules committee in my office, please. Senate will resume now. Senate, return to order. Mr. Vice President. Would you like to take care of something for us?
I would like to withdraw my previous divisions to Senate file, second rea- or third reading amendment number three to Senate file.
Absent objection, it's been withdrawn. Proceed, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, I would like to now divide the bill. So the division one. Will be everything from on page one through line one. Through line twenty eight. And then start again at line forty one. Through the remainder of the bill.
As division one, go to division two?
Division two is line one. Through line twenty eight.
No.
No, no, excuse me, excuse me. Is, is through line twenty three. Uh, and then would begin it again at line twenty nine through the remainder of the bill.
Thank you.
And that is division two.
Amendment as proposed, once again, I'll repeat that. Division one, everything except Romanet two. Lines one through twenty eight. And forty one through the end of the bill, of the amendment. Division two, everything except Romanet one, lines one through twenty three. And then twenty nine, lines twenty nine through the end of the amendment. That is the amendment in the division as proposed. Discussion.
Mr. President, on division one. And I would ask for your no vote on division one. So. Members of the body, here's what my concern is with division one, and this gets into the substance of division one is to go to Romanet two. That's all this does. Is try to address removing. Romanet two from the bill. My concern is, is this is the expulsion. Uh. So when you get to that provision, it says no conviction under this section. In other words, what this does is provide an opportunity for somebody to continue. To discriminate under the rest of the law. Now they'll pay a fifty dollar fine every time. But there's no record of this. And so my concern is, is you set up a situation now. Where somebody can continually repeat over and over and over and over and over. And do the same thing, and it's a, it's a simple fifty dollar fine. And it provides that clause that there's no record that you are absolutely somebody or an entity. That wants to be a habitual violator of this provision. As far as vaccine status, as far as discrimination. So I think what my concern is. Is let's say that there's a, a very large entity in the state of Wyoming that has. Uh, a lot of employees. And a significant number of them uh might be unvaccinated. So what it would effectively allow them to do is go in there on each individual employee and say, nope. Um, we're not gonna comply with the law. Uh. Fifty dollar fine. And then the next employee, fifty dollar fine, and we keep no court record. No way to find out if there's an employer or an individual that may employ a lot of people that is using this as a scapegoat. I understand the intent. But my concern is it has a propensity to be egregiously misused. Under a scenario. Uh, that I've just described. So, Mr. President, that's my concern with this is because there would be absolutely no way to keep track of somebody that was doing this repeatedly, other than. Fifty dollar fine, and quite frankly, I think that there's individuals and potentially entities. I don't know any of them, but I think it provides an opportunity. To basically negate what the purpose of law is for. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, again, ruled divisible, open for discussion now. The recommendation is a no vote. Uh. I believe we had Senator Anderson up first, and then we'll go to the minority floor later. Oh, okay, please proceed.
Um, Mr. President, I, I believe the vice president. Was actually on division two based on the structure of the divisions and vote, and asked to vote no on. Division two, because a no on division two would strike. Romanet two.
For the record, he did say division one, so we need further clarification.
He said he was on division one, but I think he argued against division two. This is a little bit confusing. And I vote on division one. Would keep. Romanet one. So if you like Romanet one, you need to vote I. On division one. If you oppose Romanet one, vote no on division one. Same rule then for division two. If you like division two, if, excuse me, if you like Romanet two, you would want to vote I. On division two. If you oppose Romanet two, you would vote no on division two. And I believe the good vice president was encouraging us. To oppose Romanet two, which my interpretation, Mr. President, would mean. Vote no on division two. But I could have misunderstood.
Okay, let's, let's do this.
Provide that opportunity.
Thank you. Let's do this. Senator Anderson, we're gonna put you on hold for just a moment and come back to the vice president, and we want you to give a very. Clear and distinct direction here for us on what you wanted, what your proposal was, I should say.
Mr. President, I'm reading my notes here. And I do believe that the uh minority floor leader is absolutely correct in what my intent was, Mr. President.
So let's have you explain your intent again.
So no, I am not gonna try to re-explain that, but I will reiterate.
Give us a basic intent.
On division one. I recommend that you vote I.
All right, now. We are on division one. We are on division one. Senator Anderson, would you like to say a few things?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just confused. I wanna make sure I'm correct. Uh. One, division one and division two both have one, line one through twenty three in them. Is that correct?
Yes.
They're both, both in there.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. What? Senator Steinman's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to also urge you to vote I. But the other thing I wanted to clarify is this is not about employees because we've taken all employment. Out of this bill. This bill is now about public accommodation, and so it's not. Anything to do with the employee employer relationship. It's, it's a public accommodation. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor of division one. On second reading amendment two. On third reading, excuse me, all those in favor of division one, this is second reading amendment. Third reading amendment on Senate file one zero zero three. Recommendation is an I vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
No.
Uh, chairs in doubt, all those in favor, please stand. Seventeen, those opposed, please stand. Less than seventeen. All right, we've got it. The division, division number one. Third reading amendment number two, Senate file one zero zero three has passed. Now to division two, Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, I would urge a no vote on there. Let me change the potential description of my concern. So now this is a. Someplace that provides public accommodation, a stadium, a restaurant. Uh, any facility that normally invites the public, that somebody could go into the same scenario and continue to do this activity. It's a fifty dollar fine. scenario and continue to do this activity, it's a $50 fine. There's no record that somebody is now trying to get around, because they might very well have the means to do it, and quite frankly, they just want those people in their business or establishment. I just think it's a, it's, it just creates a giant loophole to negate the very purpose of the law.
Thank you. Further discussion on Division Number Two, second reading amendment on third reading of Senate File 1003. Further discussion. Before I say this, let's hold any additional comment from the floor. We have a comment on the screen? Thank you. Did I miss a hand? Senator, go ahead. Senator Landon.
Well, Mr. President, thank you. I, I just wanted to, to weigh in if, if nobody else had anything on this second division of the amendment. And I appreciate where the Vice President is coming from, and, and he makes some very good points. Part of my fear over the last couple of days, as I pondered this bill, is, is how much room there is for misunderstanding and the various sorts of activities when, when a business might very well be trying to take care of people in a proper manner, it could easily be misconstrued. And so, the business owner gets turned in for something that maybe he was just trying to isolate a table at the request of, of some patrons to his establishment. It's misunderstood by somebody at another table as they try to move a table out of the way or whatever. And quite honestly, that doesn't rise to a level where I really want it on the record of anybody. I think that, that this is primarily going to serve as a billboard law, anyway. That's our purpose, is to, is to let our, let our constituents out across the state know, and our businesses know that, hey, we, we don't want you doing this. I think, I think I like this, this paragraph, and I hope you'll support it.
Further discussion on the, on Division Two. Further discussion on Division Two.
Mr. President?
Senator Perkins, thank you for your help, folks, on the screen. I appreciate the pointing. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on, on Division Two, remember to the Senate, Mr. President, I, I think this, I think this amendment as a whole, and, and Division Two, and specifically, highlights, highlights the overall issue with this bill, and, and what, you know, what, so, going back and, and in preference of addressing Division Two specifically, you know, what, the effect of, the effect of the bill is really to create a civil right based upon COVID vaccination status. And, and so, what the bill, what, what this bill, and again, this is in preference in, in, in introduction to, to my comments on Division Two, what this does is it creates a civil right and raises COVID vaccination status, a level of, of a, of a First Amendment right in the form of freedom of religion, and then the rest of, the rest of the category that you find that this raises the right to are immutable characteristics, race, nationality, ethnicity, sex, those are things that are immutable. We're born, we're born with those, we can't change those, and like I say, the freedom of religion is a First Amendment right, is a First Amendment right. And so, with the, the effect of the public accommodation statute is to raise it to that level of violation. And so, with the adoption of Division Two, the Division One, you know, we, we've said, great, so, well, this is a civil right, but it's not as important as those others, fair enough. And then what we're doing, and then what you do with Division Two, as you say, in fact, it's, it's such a, it's such a minor civil right, that it's now, we're now going to automatically expunge your violations of that. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's either, we're either going to, it's either a civil right or it's not a civil right. And, and so, doing, so voting, voting, I'm in, I'm in favor of Division Two, because it's either a civil right or it's not a civil right. And we're going to start to, if we're going to bifurcate the level of civil rights activity, we've already done it to some degree, now this does it even more, we can certainly go that direction. But that's what the effect of it does, we, we're diluting and creating now a second class of protected, a second class of protected classes, a less protected class, but still protected class. And this gets confusing, and it, and it highlights this whole thing, where now our businesses are, are going to be in the crossfire between this fight between the state and, and Biden, and, and we're going to have casualties. And so, Division Two, you know, like I say, it's going to be a civil right, it, we're, we're changing the level, and we're starting to differentiate between these classes, these protected classes, and it's going to be incredibly confusing, it starts us down a bad road. So, I'm, I'm going to be a, a "no" on, on Division Two as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion on Division Number Two? Further discussion. Are you ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor of Division Number Two on third reading amendment number two to Senate File 103, 1003. All those in favor, say "aye." Those opposed, nay. Chairs in doubt, division? All those in favor, stand. Seven. All those opposed, stand. Seventeen, nineteen. Division Two has failed. Back on the overall amendment, then. No. Let's go to the next amendment. There is another amendment. Reading clerk, please read in the amendment. And before I do that, please, folks, a reminder, we'd like these votes to be clean. I'm asking that you not add editorial comment from the floor while we're voting. Let it stand as a clean vote. Thank you for consideration. You are the Senate. Thank you. Reading clerk, read in the amendment.
Senate File 1003, third reading amendment number three, page one, line eight.
Senator Bittman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move Amendment Number Three to Senate File 1003, and ask for your favorable consideration. Ladies and gentlemen, what this amendment does is allows for parental consent to both the COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen vaccines and masks in schools. Leaves the decision up to the parents whether or not that that is going to occur. So, if you look at your amendment, what it does on page one, line eight adds after definition and inserting, creating a waiver for public school mask mandates. Then, on page seven, line sixteen, where we're already in Title 21, we're going to insert, you create a new subsection E under 214309. Then on page nine, line 20, this is the, the COVID nineteen vaccine waiver. This applies only to the COVID nineteen vaccine, so if the parent decides to opt their child, child out of the COVID nineteen vaccine, the school has to grant that waiver. It says it shall be granted. Page 10, line, after line seven, insert subsection E. What this does, the state or county health officer shall grant waivers to any mask mandate imposed on any person attending full or part-time, any public school or kindergarten through 12th grade upon submission of a written request by the child's parent or legal guardian. So, that's all it does, Mr. President. I hope we can get this in there. It's, it's a very important piece to, to, to this bill, and I think without it, parents will be pretty upset that we don't take care of this. So, I ask for your "aye" vote. Thank you.
Okay, we are on third reading amendment number three to Senate File 103, 1003. Further discussion. Let's go Anderson and Wasseburger in that order.
Mr. President, I just wondered why we're giving them seven business days to make that waiver. I, I would assume the waiver ought to be immediate, but just a inquiry.
Thank you. Senator Wasseburger?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not sure, but it seems to me that if we pass this amendment, we ultimately would force school administrators to make a choice between the health and safety of their students and holding live classes. In other words, if we allow parents to waive the requirement of masks at school, then ultimately, I think we would force school districts into a situation of going remote. And I'm not sure we want to do that. I think many of the things that came out of the months that we did go remote as schools, that it was detrimental to young children being home. It was very difficult on parents. And so, I, I agree with the idea, but I'm not sure we want to force districts into a situation like that. So, I, the question for the sponsor would be, would this force school districts into the only choice that they have, which would be to keep kids home instead of having them at school? And, you know, I, I think, I think at this point in time, it would be an excellent opportunity to, to talk about what Wyoming did in K-12. It did something that most other states weren't able to do. We, we went live for an entire school year when other states were shut down, because, at least in Campbell County School District, those students wore masks. And if you remember, when we first shut down, the students lost all kinds of things. They lost, they lost track, they lost their state basketball in 4A and 3A, they lost their prom, their graduation, all kinds of things. And so, in order for students to get, to have the opportunity to do the things that we got to do when we were in school, we had to have masks. And, and so, I'm, I'm worried that this might force school districts into a situation to where they would have to go masked, just, just to keep the kids healthy. And so, I'm, I don't, I'm not for sure what, what this does, but that's my thought.
Thank you. Senator Bittman, you're keeping track of these. We're going to continue and go onto the screen now with Senator Boner, and then we'll come back to those on the floor.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say I appreciate the sponsor of the amendment, bringing this forward, and wish we would have had an opportunity to discuss this issue a little bit more detail in a separate bill, but here we are. But my question is mostly technical on paragraph E, basically the lines 23 and on of the amendment. There's no specific mention of COVID nineteen, so I'm just wondering what the effect of the amendment would be when it comes to masks. Would this apply to any public health order in our public schools, or is it limited only to COVID nineteen?
Thank you. Let's continue. Let's go to Senator Hutchings first, then we go to Senator Greer, and then we go to Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I was looking at our Wyoming statute 214309, where it speaks about.
Senator, make sure those in listening across the state can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In that statute, 214309, mandatory immunizations for students, we do have a section where students can be issued waivers and get written permission not to have vaccinations, and they are allowed to be in the schools until there is an outbreak, and then those students will be asked to be excluded and not be counted as pupil, pupils that are absent. So, we kind of already covered that in our statutes, and that was just my attempt to answer the Senator to the left of me's question.
Thank you. Sponsor still tracking all these, while we go to Senator Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise with a question, and I think the good Senator may have just helped me answer it, but I want to make sure. On line nine, so you type page nine, line 20, so, strike vaccine and insert vaccines for preventable diseases on line 10. Let's make sure that I understand what that means exactly. So, and I want to give an example. So, if I'm taking my daughter who's starting kindergarten, and I enroll her, and they say, "Do you have your vaccine card for all the infectious rubella and all those other diseases that you have to have a card for?" Then, I do. That this, with this, voting for this means that you don't have to do that, and they have seven days to do it. And, and so, I'm just trying to get a little clarity on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Let's go to Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to divide the amendment. The first division would be lines six through 20. Division Two would be lines one through five and lines 21 through 30.
Would you repeat, please?
Yes, the Division One would be line six through 20. Division Two would be lines one through five and 21 through 30.
Rule divisible. Go ahead and explain Division One first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Division One deals with vaccines, and I think we had some discussion on this earlier about what's a preventable disease versus, you know, flu vaccines, COVID vaccines. So, I think that this seeks to have a, a separate conversation about vaccine waivers. Division Two, by contrast, deals with mask mandates. I don't necessarily disagree with some of the concepts here, but I think, you know, we're the Senate, and we don't usually make such big changes on third reading amendments, and so, I thought it would warrant a little, a separate consideration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Kinskey.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. To my esteemed colleague from the north, I, just two questions, and, and I know you only have one more time to speak, but I'm concerned if somebody wants to see this bill go into effect, I'm concerned about a constitutional challenge. And this is the kind of bill that's likely to have somebody sue challenging the constitutionality. And as you know, our Constitution says you can't do the old switcheroo in a bill. I mean, whatever is the bill title is the bill title, and if, and, and I see there's an attempt here to amend it, but is it consistent with the spirit of the Constitution, which says, whatever the bill content is, it has to be consistent with the title as it moves through the process? And if you look at, at the, this bill that we've been debating for three days now, it talks about vaccination status discrimination, discrimination based on vaccination status, prohibiting insurance discrimination based on vaccination status, and, and nowhere does it talk about masks, school districts, or waivers. So, there's a concern there that if we were to do this at this time, is this going to survive a constitutional challenge? It just, it, it's, it's a, it's a question. The, the second question is, in the last session, I heard from people loud and clear, "We want Cheyenne out of this." "We want local control. We don't want the governor telling us what to do. We don't want the state health officer telling us what to do. We want local control." So, why now would we pass a bill that says, "But piecemeal, we're going to reel it back into Cheyenne." I'm just, I, I want to know how that's consistent. Just two quick questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, the good sponsor of the amendment due to the division is now entitled to speak twice on Division One and on Division Two. His clock is reset, so he's welcome to respond as he sees fit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Due to the division. Okay, let's keep collecting those for the sponsor. He's prepared and ready, no doubt. So, I believe I saw Senator Schuler stand first, then I'll go to Senator Steinman's.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question's pretty easy, I think, to answer. I just wondered, before we came up with the amendments. Thank you, Mr. President. My question's pretty easy, I think, to answer. I just wondered before we came up with the amendments, which I don't disagree with the intent of either one of them, actually. I do believe that parents should have the right to do what's best for their kids, but I just wondered if the bringer of the bill had had a chance to visit with the Department of Education or, or any of the education folks to kind of get their take on how this would affect maybe schools, smart plans, smart health plans and that sort of thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Simons.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll take a stab at the good senator behind these questions. So basically, the bill title did originally have educational opportunities in it. It does deal with the same title that this bill seeks to go into and that we were instructed when we were drafting these bills to make the titles large so that these other bills could be amended in because we knew we had a limited amount of time. And so everyone in the beginning was encouraged to amend their bills into these other bills. And so I think that was the impetus of this happening. The second question about the bringing the state health officer into it, they're already in the mix as far as vaccines. We're trying to make this a little better right now without reworking that entire statute because we're requiring them to give, give the waiver rather than allowing them latitude. For example, in my county, the county commissioners regarding the House Bill 127 that we implemented last session, we went ahead and the county health officer issued a health order that masking was optional in Goshen County because he did not see the metrics. The prison population was affecting the school metrics. And so that had to be signed off on by the state health officer, and she rejected that and allowed the school district to continue with their mask mandate, even though 250 to 300 parents showed up at the school board meeting and said, we don't want that. And so this is a way to say you have to honor parental rights, and that's why I'm proud to stand on and for both divisions of this amendment.
I find it quite piquant that we're discussing the constitutionality of the title of this bill versus what we're putting in it. Yet it stomps all over Article One of our state constitution to begin with. So are we going to pick and choose when we're going to be constitutional and when we're not? And if we turn this over to the school system, we're going to allow school boards to hold us hostage? They came up with answers in Campbell County, like you can wrestle and you could take your mask off when you wrestled. So you got boys and maybe some girls exchanging sweat and spit and bodily fluids. Then they get done with the match and they have to put their mask back on and they can't shake hands. So I'm on and for both these amendments or divisions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I find very ironic is that we're talking about this and we've seen a young lady that was arrested. And what, which everyone needs to see is the video of when they detain her and they're not wearing masks in there. Do as I say, not as I do. That's what's going on here. I think both of these divisions, we need to support them, and I'm calling for the eyes and nose.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my first time on division one, on and against division one. This is challenging. I think we all know that this is challenging. I wish it weren't. I wish it were easy, where everybody could make their own individual choice and that individual choice would only affect themselves. And we could have the simple decision where we say, well, let's leave it up to the parents, and then the parents can on behalf of their children make a choice. And then that choice would only affect their kids and their family. This would be easy. And honestly, Mr. President, we wouldn't be here right now if that were the way it was. We're here unfortunately because that decision about the vaccination and that decision about the masking doesn't just affect that individual. It doesn't affect the parent, the kid, it affects the community. So when we contemplate these types of rules, we can't isolate. I want my parental rights also respected. I want other people's parental rights. I want everybody's parental rights and those children's rights and individual rights. I want a solution that respects everyone's and allows us to each have exactly what we want. The trouble is on this one, we don't get that. Everyone's trotting all over everyone else's constitutional rights here. That's the challenge, and that's why we're in a special session. If there were bright lines here, we wouldn't have to be here. So how do we accommodate that? Well, we have in the cases of schools, and both of these deal with schools, and I'll just note for the record that I do agree with the good Senator from up in Sheridan, that there are some constitutional concerns with whether this fits within the title. I don't feel particularly the vaccinations as written do, and I'd have the same concern for the next division. But that aside, to the merit and to the procedure, when the federal government sees what the states are doing and they don't like what they're doing, the federal government comes along and imposes mandates and says, I don't like you all to have individual choices. You're not making the choices we want. And we're the federal government and we have the supremacy clause. And gosh darn it, Mr. President, we can tell you exactly what you're going to do, and then you have to do it. And we shake our fist and we rail against that, and we complain, rightly so, because we do have constitutional protections that are supposed to provide us with the opportunity to make those decisions here in the state of Wyoming instead of having to rely on the micromanagement of the federal government. And then we turn around literally the next day, because I'm pretty sure we were saying that yesterday. Literally the next day, we come forward with an amendment like division one, which is school boards, duly elected school boards, empowered and entrusted with the authority and responsibility to oversee the safe and effective education of our students. We see what you're doing and we didn't like it. So we are going to impose upon you a uniform, one size fits all solution that requires that you do what we say because we are the state and we can tell you what to do and we control you and we know better and we want a one size fits all solution because we heard from some of our people that that's what they'd like to see. Well, Mr. President, my district doesn't want this solution. I know some of yours do. And you've got school boards that if they're listening to the same people you're listening to, will step up and implement Romanet I. And just to save time, they'll implement Romanet II. Or division two, my apologies. They'll implement division two if that's what they hear from their constituents and they feel that's in the best interest of their students. They'll have those local school board meetings. So I don't know how we can stand here and rail against the feds one day and then not reflect upon ourselves the next day as we're trying to jam down the throats of all districts, all parents, a one size fits all solution that does not reflect my district and my constituents or me personally as a parent of four kids in the school system. It's a hard challenge. I wish we had an easy solution. We don't. This isn't it. Mr. President, thank you. On and against.
I don't often say much. Hardly ever. But you know, this is a personal thing with me and many others. I've got five grandkids in the school system. And I fully support this, these, these two divisions. Because I, my granddaughter is beautiful child wearing a mask all day long. Excuse me. Literally passed out because she was breathing her own air. No fresh air all day long. That's not fair to her or any of those little kids. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my second time, I believe I was misunderstood by my colleagues. I'm not asserting for a fact that it's unconstitutional. So both those pro and con have said that I'm raising that as a, as a fact. I'm asking the question and hopefully it can be, my concern can be assuaged by the bringer of the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, that's, there we go. Senator Perkins, you're up, sir.
I didn't, I was just giving up, but anyway, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President. I guess, first, first a question, just, you know, as trying to track through these two divisions and we're on division one. So with question with respect to division two is I understand where it's placed in division two and trying to see what that does by putting it in there. I mean, this is certainly, I express admiration for a, for the bringer of the amendment to recognize the fact that when you, even though these were in, it's just conforming amendments later on, you know, you have an opportunity, should always seize it. And so you know, and I don't have a problem with the effect of this being, because we were talking about COVID-19 status, particularly division one deals with COVID-19 status and COVID. So you know, I don't have a particular problem with, with, with whether that's within the bill with respect to division two. But just to go back and underscore, I, you know, I I, I understand and believe and hear that. And I, and I don't know what masks, I don't know what masks do. I don't know what COVID vaccines do. Some of us have got, some of us in this body have gotten COVID vaccines. Some of us have. Some of us have had COVID. Some of us haven't. And the problem we have with, particularly with COVID-19 is we just don't know enough that this disease has been rampant, ravaging the world, our country and our state for, for, you know, almost just about two years now, it's coming up on two years. But before that, it was, there wasn't very much known about it. And we don't know. We don't know where this is going to be. And so my question is, is we look at this and how this works and, and where you go at on page nine and what this particularly does is particularly about mandatory immunization for children attending the schools and exceptions. And I guess when we do this, my question would be, is I, as I understand that, so you can get, you have this waiver about parents and whether or not their kids get vaccinated. Fair enough. But and then, but going through there, my understanding is, and it's, somebody who looks at this or the bringer of the amendment, the last sentence is, or the last, when we talk about the last couple of sentences is when you have a situation where a person has not had these vaccines or are not immunized against the occurring vaccine preventable disease shall be excluded from school attendance for the period of time determined by the state or county health authority, but not for suspended from school. So they're going to be excluded. If parents do this and the vaccine is up, there's the option to exclude them completely from school. Although I assume that they'll be attending virtually and, you know, a lot of things have changed in the last two years. So they'll, they'll be excluded from potentially school attendance. And I just wanted, and so this is bringing for, my question is to bringer the, of the amendment is, as I read this, you can, the parents will get the waiver, but ultimately if the school decides to exclude them because of the presentable disease and what and the condition of the school or students that are around it, they have the, they still have the ability to exclude them because they've been granted the waiver. They haven't had the vaccines, therefore they can be excluded. They're not suspended. The property attend virtually or other accommodations be made, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood that that's what the effect of, of this, of this one does. I think that it does leave it within the school board because the school board can still exclude them, like they can other students who have been vaccinated unless I'm reading it wrong. So I'd like some clarification from the bringer of the amendment when he talks for his first time on division one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator, Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the reason for the division is just this. I think there are a lot of arguments to be made about vaccines versus masks. So I would just ask colleagues, like, let's stand division one, which deals with the vaccine language. And my question is for the bringer of the amendment. I'm just trying to make sure I've understand it correctly. When I read page 13, which talks about childhood immunizations, in the bill, it says, except as prohibited by Wyoming statute, the newly created 35-4-140. So right there, we say we're prohibiting that requirement that COVID vaccines be mandated. But then we have a waiver for it. And that's my confusion is if we've already said we're not going to mandate it, then why do we need a waiver for something that we're prohibiting? So that's my question on division one. Thank you, Mr. President.
For the follow-up and discussion? Any further discussion? We're on division one. Senator Furphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'm concerned about is we're overriding our school history. In our school district, we had three separate meetings with parents. And we had two to 300 parents show up at the school board meetings at each of these meetings. And they vented this issue thoroughly. And they took a lot of input from both sides. And then the school board, after these three meetings, probably representing nearly potentially a thousand of the parents in our area, the school district made a decision to wear masks for another three or four weeks, and then potentially they may remove the masks. I'm concerned, Mr. President, we're overriding our school district who's taken all that input. We're not getting that input at this level. We're just trying to make a decision based on a few people who don't like masks. And believe me, of those people that showed up, there were a lot who were protesting against masks. But the school district made a prudent decision. And I'm very much against overriding our school districts who are taking that much input. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Senator Hicks.
That we're trying to grapple with. So the discussion is, is the why are we doing exactly what we're here because we despise what happened? And I think we need to understand that. So let me see if I can articulate that. So under our federal constitution, Congress is well within their right to write laws. And if there's a conflict between a state law and a federal law, the supremacy clause comes into play. And there's a long lengthy court history, although there is some debate amongst that. By extension, when a federal agency promulgates a rule or regulation based on a law enacted by Congress has the full effect of superseding a state law that's in conflict. That's not what happened. What happened is we have an executive order with the threat of rulemaking to an agency. And I can't come back. I've done a literature review on it. I'm trying to find, I can't find any court history that would support what's going on from a standpoint of an executive order or a directive from the executive office mandating to a federal agency to promulgate rules or regulations. So in my mind, when I look at that and the research that I'm doing, and quite frankly, it's not been exhaustive of all the body is I clearly think, or I wouldn't be here today, that what's going on is unconstitutional. Now let's change that to what we're doing here relative to our responsibility of the citizens of state of Wyoming to uphold the oath of office we take. So in a same, similar seminary, when we talk about school districts and school boards, we, not dissimilar to Congress, write the laws. And then that write the laws. And then that tears down. That's our responsibility. We can do that. There may be an argument that it's a broad law. But the fundamental difference that I see within this department, and so, the other responsibility we have is, is that constitutional provision in Article 138. Does that not extend to children in the school system? So I understand the national, the natural tension that we have here. But when I look at the debate from a standpoint of why we're here, is, one, we have a federal entity, clearly in my mind, is proceeding down an unconstitutional path. We, as a state legislature who write laws, we can do that. It is constitutional, and we have a constitutional obligation. Now, that being said, with the discussion that we've had about, well, my school district and my school district. I always remember what Thomas Jefferson said, Mr. President. He says, "The right of the majority shall always prevail. But for that right to be truthful and honest and just, you have to look after the interests of the minority." You have to do that, or it's tyranny, Mr. President. So what I find before us now is a discussion of this, is should we, should we exert local, should we, as a legislature, proceed with enactment of laws that would actually supersede the ability of the school boards to make choice? And I come back to what Thomas Jefferson said. What's our responsibility? If we do this, is it just? Are we looking after the interests of the minority? That's the question, when I sit here and I grapple with this decision. Is it right for one school district to trample on the interest of the minority? No different is it right for another school district to trample on the right of the minority? And in case one school district wants to get rid of mask mandates, but they have a number of people that represent them, that say, no, we want mask mandates. And the converse is absolutely true, too. And I think that's what my colleague from Albany County is saying. So the answer is, the question is, each one of you is going to have to search, because it is our job. We do have a responsibility, and we are well within our constitutional rights as a legislative body to enact this. It's your job, folks. I struggle with protecting the interests of the minority, at the same time allowing the majority's opinion to prevail. I'm not speaking for or against it. I'm speaking, this is the issue that we need to be in your own mind. And my mind, Mr. President, is what we're debating here. About your conscience, folks.
Thank you. Further discussion, Division One? Further discussion, okay. Looks like we're ready to go back to the sponsor. And it's my understanding you have two different times. Oh, sorry. I was just anxiously, I was anxiously awaiting what you had to say to all this.
Dramatic pause, Mr. President. Ah, it should be a deep breath. Like, I think I have nine questions written down. I'll do my very best to, to answer them all for my good colleagues. I'll just take them in order. Number one, to my good colleague from Nitrona County, the seven-day question. I would prefer have an immediate resolution to it, but the seven days is there to prevent, you know, to allow for conflict resolution, and to not allow them to slow walk the, the discussion and the decision-making. So seven days is there because I figured that would be a good compromise. Number two, let's see, to my good senator from the camel country. I think that was answered by the senator behind me, but I'll take another stab at it. Yes, this would not allow for them to go for forced promote because of the applicable law that she mentioned regarding in the presence of an outbreak, outbreak of vaccine preventable diseases as determined by the state or county health authority, which goes to my good friend from Nitrona County's question. No, that's not the school board's call. It's the county health officer's call, or the state health authority's call. Schoolchildren for whom a waiver has been issued and who are not immunized, immunized, immunized against the occurring vaccine preventable disease shall be excluded from school attendance for the period of time determined by the state or county health authority, but not suspended from school. So they can continue on remotely until this outbreak has been under control and the county health officers deemed it safe to come back. Let's see. Number three, with this, well, I guess that deals with masks, and we're on the vaccine division, so I'll skip that one. Page nine, line 20, to my good friend from Teton County. This applies only to the COVID vaccine, the way this amendment was written, where we insert, we strike any vaccine and insert, or vaccines for preventable diseases, period. And then here comes the waiver just for the COVID-19 vaccine. And that waiver shall be granted by the state or county public health officers upon written submission by the parent, going back to parental choice. Number five, the constitutionality and the constitutional challenge. I'll remind the body that we were all told, the very onset of this special session, that we aren't going to have time for maybe one, two, or three bills. All of our personal bills will probably go by the wayside for the bills that leadership picked for us. But they were purposely written to be broad enough to, to be able to accommodate all of our personal bills to be put in there. So, I trusted in my leadership that that was the case. I consulted with LSO. I also asked this morning about a, do I need a severability clause for this amendment, in case my amendment is unconstitutional, or it killed the whole bill? They told me, no, in Wyoming, we do not need to put severable, severability clauses into our bills because it's already in statute. So even if the worst-case scenario, this gets challenged, and my amendment is ruled unconstitutional because it's not germane to the bill, the rest of the bill will stand. Number six, did I do visit with the Department of Education on this? No, I did not. I've been hearing from my parents, this is a hot topic in my district, is, goes back to parental rights. Who's in charge of your child's healthcare decisions? Is it you, or is it the school board? That is the fundamental question. This puts it in the hands of the parents. The school boards have taken on powers that I don't believe they have. And if they do have it, we shouldn't have given them those powers. And this rectifies that. So then, for my daughters, if I don't want them to wear masks, or get a vaccine for COVID-19, that should be my choice, not the school board's choice. I think that goes back to number eight, answers that question. So, bottom line is that. We can boil this thing down to the fundamental question of who is in charge? Parents, or the government? I will always fall back on the parents, not the government, to make these very important healthcare decisions. Both of these divisions deal with healthcare choices. Division One with the vaccine for COVID-19, Division Two for masks. We'll get to masks in a minute, but let's, Division One, and we'll go on in Division Two. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Ready for the question, then, on Division One? Question being called. Division One, Third Reading Amendment Number Three, to Senate File 1003. Chief Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call on the division. Anderson?
No.
No. Baldwin? Excused. Feitman?
Aye.
Aye. Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard?
Aye.
Aye. Case?
No.
No. Cooper?
Aye.
Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
French?
Aye.
Aye. Furphy?
No.
No. Giroux?
No.
No. Hicks?
Aye.
Aye. Hutchings?
Aye.
Aye. James?
Aye.
Aye. Kinsky?
No.
No. Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Cost? Aye. Landon?
No.
No. McCune?
Aye.
Aye. Nethercot? Aye. Pappas, excused. Perkins?
Aye.
Aye. Rothfuss?
No.
No. Salazar?
Aye.
Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott?
No.
No. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Aye. Wasserburger? No. President Doc Shetter? Aye. Kinsky, no to aye. Closing vote? Closing. Vote closed. On Division One, 20, aye, eight, no, two excused.
By your vote, Division One, Third Reading Amendment Number Three, to Senate File 1003 has passed. Division Two? Is there any discussion on Division Two? Senator Rothfuss?
Thanks, Mr. President. Briefly, on Division Two, I wanted to add to my previous thoughts. A lot of those applied to this. But the discussion from the good sponsor of the amendment came up about it being a choice between parents and the state, who makes the decision for their kids, the parents or the state. I just want to be very clear. I'm making this choice for the parents as well. It's just that all the parents don't agree. This gets back to the challenge that we have. In every community, yours, mine, there are parents that want their kids not to have to wear a mask and not to be vaccinated. And they have the interests of their children in mind when they say that. And in everyone's community, there are parents that don't want their kids to be in class with other students that aren't masked and aren't vaccinated, because they're worried about their kids. And they're afraid that puts their kids at risk. I'm one of those parents. It's not that clean choice. Do we want the heavy-handed government, or do we want to respect parents' rights? Once again, if only it were easy that way. If only it were clear. A decision to allow a student's parents to opt them out of the mask mandate is the heavy hand of the state coming down and siding with the parents, a significant group of parents, that doesn't want their kid to be wearing a mask, but against the wishes of the other parents that do want that kid to wear a mask. Because remember, the mask isn't protecting the kid. The mask is protecting the other kids. That's how the masking works. Vaccination is, to a large degree, the same way. The vaccination is not just protecting the person vaccinated. The vaccination epidemiologically is protecting the community, the group. But it's even more so, Mr. President, from the masking standpoint. The mask protects the other kids, not the kid wearing the mask. So when I want a masking order, it's not because I want my kids to show up masked. It's really because I want all the other kids to show up masked. And that's a hard reality. That's, that's where we get to the challenges that are incumbent in all of this discussion. So, it isn't a choice, Mr. President, between, do we want to listen to the parents, or do we want to give the rights to the school board? There's a reason all the school boards keep coming down supporting mask mandates, because the data supports mask mandates. It supports masking for the safety of the kids, to keep the schools open. The good senator from up in Campbell County said at the beginning of this debate, that the implication of this order is to shut down schools. That's the alternative. That's what school boards will do. If they can't keep their kids safe, they don't say, oh, well, the legislature said, let them not mask. And then they just keep running the school, and they have everyone get sick. That's not how it works. We saw last year how it works. The way it works is if you can't keep your kids safe, you go virtual. You go online. That's the choice we're making on this amendment, on and against Division Two.
I believe I saw Senator Scott spring faster than Senator Cole. Yeah. Senator Scott?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, what we just heard was from the point of view of the parent, who thinks maybe that their own kid is better protected. And that's appropriate with, with the age of the, of the good senator, and got children in school. Mr. President, let me add a different perspective as the oldest member here of the Senate. I've seen a number of instances where it's not concern over the child. The COVID is unusual. It's not been as much of a risk for the children. But it can be, and I have seen it, a risk for grandparents at home. People are afraid child will bring COVID home. And the person that is infected and is placed at risk is a grandparent with serious health conditions, for whom, Mr. President, COVID is a very, very real risk. And I think that is as important as protecting the children on and against this division.
Senator Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say, I've heard that all the school districts have mask mandates. And I'll just be clear that in Sweetwater County, that's not true. They do not have mask mandates. However, it doesn't take away the, the reason why I'm standing. I'm standing because I, I support this question in front of us. I support it because in the past, we've had, frankly, situations where health officials were making decisions, and then all the folks within our county, and I'll just speak in our county, were following those decisions. And I can speak, in my, in our case, wasn't appropriate. My feeling, wasn't appropriate. Folks want to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. You go to school, you want to wear a mask, your family says, hey, I want you to wear a mask, your child, no one's saying, no, take that off. So that option is there. I think that we live in a litigious society. We live in a society that everybody hopes someone smarter than them is going to make a decision. And frankly, that's not always the case. So I want to defer to parents. They're your children. They came from you. You have the right to have a say in how they conduct themselves with their health. And I think it lies best with them. They have the right to make good and bad decisions. I'm afraid government's role is not to stand up and hit you over the head with a hammer because you don't agree with, you know, with what the parent says. Parents have the rights to make the decisions they like to make, whether I like them or not. They are their rights. And I think in this particular case, we're talking about, that this mandate, I think we're best served letting the parents do that job. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we had Senator Perkins on the screen, and then we'll come back to the floor. Senator Perkins, did we have you there?
Yes, you do. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on and against Division Two, I think there's a significant differentiation between Division One and Division Two. Division, Division One developed with, with intrusion into your, into your children's body with a vaccine. That's a significant health issue, and every parent ought to be able to make those decisions for their children. Mask mandates, I think, are just different. And I'm against it for two reasons. One is, is, I've been, ever since this bill was referred to Committee Number Two for the hearing, I've been, I've been, I've looked at this bill very hard. And nothing in this bill had to do with masks. It was all about COVID-19 vaccine and the mandates, and COVID vaccine status. There was nothing in here about masks. And so, this one, I think, does, I mean, ultimately, you vote however you're going to vote, and if it, you know, there's resolutions, if this is, if this is beyond the scope of a one, of a one-purpose bill. But, but for me, that's a significant difference. This, this one is about masks. This entire bill was directed at vaccines and vaccine status. So I differentiate for that one reason. The other reason, I don't know about masks. Ever, all of us have read, have looked and heard and read, and you can find any, you can find experts out there that support masks and tell you how wonderful it is. You'll find experts out there who say, not any good. And, and of course, we have the certain one advisor that we see on TV all the time that was for him before he was against him, and then we had to have two or three of them, and then we don't have to. And I don't know. I don't know. was for him before he was against him. And then we had to have two or three of them and then we don't have to. And I don't know. I don't know. Um, I know the doctors wear them in operating rooms and it seems to help there, but other than that, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any strong feeling about it. But what this is, this is the difference when masking is significant. One is, I think it's, it's was never mentioned in the bill before, now it is. The other one is, is this, is now we're allowing a parent to determine, uh, that whether the kid wears a school and, and, and that's a, and that one size fits all for masking, I think is just inappropriate. I think we learned that last year. And the governor learned that last year was new, issued, he issued a, a, we had statewide orders and then the state orders were listed. Now that the governor said, no, you know, that was a right. It was not a one size fits all. And there, and it was obvious. She walked, as you looked at it last year, some counties had one or two, maybe three COVID cases at any one time, up, sometimes up to five, and others had hundreds, not thousands of COVID cases at one time. So a mask mandate and, and whether people wear masks or don't wear masks is really a local decision. It's localized based upon what's happening on the ground. And this one is now a legislative mandate that says any parent anywhere can decide whether the kid has to wear a mask in school. Fine, fair enough, uh, you know, they can do that, but, but there's a consequence of that. There are many kids in our schools, our special education kids who have very serious comorbidity issues. Uh, so we just allow the parents of kids to say, do I, they can't, my kid doesn't have to wear a mask in school and then, and then does that increase the risk to, to other kids who have significant comorbidity issues? We know that we mainstream all kinds of kids in our school that have both physical and mental, uh, uh, mental disabilities and, and some of those, particularly the physical disabilities, create significant risk for them for exposure. And so we, and, and some schools have serious ones of those, some school districts don't. And so for us to do this at the state level, I think is really not very smart. I think it's, 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 I think this is really one of those issues where government closest to the people is the right way to be. And whether, and in this case, since we're specifically talking about schools, this is why little school boards are so important. This is right in their wheelhouse. And, and I don't, I can't from, from my, uh, my purview as a state legislator impose this on the entire state because it is just different as you cross the state. Not every county, not every community has the same concerns and same issues. And we got to give some flexibility to folks to do that instead of mandate these things from Cheyenne. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this, um, division two issue has been a particularly sore spot since the COVID started. Um, I don't see this coming to the budget session. And this is going to be one of the fundamental decisions we make as a body. Uh, and for that reason, I call for the roll call vote.
Thank you. Further discussion on division two. Senator McCune?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and I do agree, this is a tough issue. And it's hard. It's a big decision. But at the end of the day, your parental rights end with your child. They don't get to come over and tell me what my child can or can't do. And if we go down this path and we protect the, the betterment of the whole at the expense of liberties and freedoms, we're, we're almost entering socialism. We're telling parents how to raise their kids. Next it'll be what churches they can go to. Because I don't want my kid around your kid who studies witchcraft or whatever. It, it's just the beginning of bad, bad policy. And I do believe in Article One, Section 38, in the parents' rights to make the decisions. We listen to hours, hours of government-funded commercials, clinking glasses. The vaccines work. We can do this. We can do that. Well, if the vaccines work, then why do we have to mandate it? You can say, I'm putting my child at risk, but you have an answer to protect your child if you believe in it. You say, masks protect my kid? Great. Put your kid in a mask. If I don't want my child in a mask, I should have that option. And if the unmasked and the unvaccinated child, if I listen to the overarching data out there, is at risk. Not a vaccinated child with a mask. So once again, we're trying to go in and tell people how to raise their children. It's kind of like in the eighties. Can you spank your child or can you not spank your child? We tried to dictate that. So I would say it's a slippery slope on and for the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion on division two? Senator Cooper? Yeah, let's go to Senator Cooper and Senator Boner. You're in, you're in the batter's box. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The little bit I have to say today isn't going to change anybody's mind. We've all got our mind made up already. But what we really need to, to remember is why we're here. This is one of the questions that, that my constituents put forward and pushed. We want to maintain our parental rights. This is, this is one of the most important things to the people in, in my district. Um, I'm here to speak for this. I'm here to speak for my people. Thank you, sir.
McCune, now on to the screen, Senator Boner.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just a little bit further explanation. Look forward to, uh, the answer to my question as to whether this, uh, provision only applies to the current pandemic or applies to any pandemic in the, uh, future. And just like to, you know, I guess give a further explanation as to why that's so important to me. And, you know, as we look at this bill in particular, I think it's important that we be extra aware of the unintended consequences of, um, any, uh, provisions in this legislation. And while I'm certainly in favor of this provision, if it's limited to the current pandemic, I can't necessarily support it if it applies to any and all public health issues that may arise, uh, from now until, um, uh, until potentially that the law changes at some future point. I'd just like to point out that the previous pandemic a hundred years ago, what targeted or, or not targeted, but children were much more susceptible to that Spanish flu than they are to the, the current, uh, crisis. So just want to make sure that we're thinking through all the consequences of, of these, this amendment. Um, and the way I read, I don't see any particular provision that limits it to COVID-19. So if I'm wrong, I hope I am, but please, I ask that the sponsor amendment pointed out, otherwise I, I, I have concern about the unintended consequences. I agree with the intent, but we have to, um, focus on the words on the paper. And right now I don't see anything that limits this to only COVID-19. So, uh, the answer to that question is really important to me. I'd just like to explain a little bit, uh, more why that is.
Continue with the discussion, division two. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Let's go back to the sponsor. Oh, whoop, sorry. Let's go to Senator Wasserberger first. Sorry, Senator Byman. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to remind the body, uh, Article One, Section 38, right of healthcare access. Section A, each competent adult shall have the right to make his or her own healthcare decisions. The parent, guardian, or legal representative of any other natural person shall have the right to make healthcare decisions for that person. When you go down to the other sections of Article 38, it says subsection C. The legislature may determine reasonable and necessary restrictions on the rights granted under this section to protect the health and general welfare of the people or to accomplish the other purposes set forth in the Wyoming Constitution. That's what Article 38 says.
Thank you. If there's no other further discussion, we'll go back to the sponsor, Senator Byman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for the questions and the good debate. I'll bring it home with, with an answer to, to the argument of the ma- masks are there to protect others. Um, we can't have props on the floor. Otherwise I would hold up a box of masks. And on that box, the label says, this product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or other viruses or contaminants. The parents, myself included, I have kids in school, public schools, one of the only ones in this, Gotti, that does. Parents are done playing this game. You walk into a school, the employees of the school don't even have their mask on till somebody walks in the door, old crap, we better put our mask on. Kids running around, mask below their nose, mouth hanging out, running around. This is not even being implemented properly. It's a joke. And the moment, the, the comment made about the wrestling is so true. And it just points out the fact that we're not even taking this seriously anymore. If we were serious about it, these kids would be in N-95 respirators, taught how to properly wear them. That's a whole different debate, but that's not what is happening on the ground in the state of Wyoming and parents are furious. It's like, let us opt out of this nonsense. If you're a branch COVIDian and you believe in these masks, that they're the gospel and they're the, you know, it's like a religion for some people. Fine, let them be that way. Let them do that to their kids, but don't do it to my kid. I'm done. My kids are done. It ruins their day. It's awful to see what they have to sit in this stinky hot mask for eight hours a day. Then as soon as that magical school bell rings, the masks come off, everybody goes home, everybody goes to practice, everybody goes about their day. They're spreading whatever, if they had it, they're going to spread it. They're going to take it to grandma and grandpa's house because they're probably not wearing a mask on the way there. Let's be honest with ourselves, people. What we're doing to these kids is cruel. And if you're okay with it, this, this amendment allows you to do this to your kid, but not to mine. We're done. This is a waiver. You shall get the waiver. If you don't want to play anymore, you get the waiver. If not, put a mask on your kid, so be it. Vote aye.
Ready for the question? Question being called, roll call requested. Chief Clerk call the roll.
Roll call on division two. Anderson?
No.
No. Baldwin?
No.
No. Byman?
Aye.
Aye. Boner?
No.
No. Bouchard?
Aye.
Aye. Case?
No.
No. Cooper?
Aye.
Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis? Aye. French?
Aye.
Aye. Furphy?
No.
No. Guru?
No.
No. Hicks?
Aye.
Aye. Hutchings?
Aye.
Aye. James? Aye. Kinsky?
No.
No. Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Cost? No. Landon?
No.
No. McCune?
Aye.
Aye. Nethercot? Aye. Pappas, excuse. Perkins?
No.
No. Rothfuss?
No.
No. Salazar?
Aye.
Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott?
No.
No. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Aye. Wasserburger?
No.
No. President Doc Stetter? Aye. Closing vote? Closing. Vote closed. 16 aye, 13 no, one excused.
Division two, on third reading amendment number three to Senate File 1003 has passed. The amendment's passed. Folks, do we need a break, Mr. Floor Leader? We'll keep going, a little rest. Okay. Before we go to this next minute, Mr. Floor Leader, um, we're going to take a little, just, uh, we'll recess until the sound of the gamble.